Regular meeting call to order. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Werner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore. Please stand for a silent prayer.
Before we do this, I just ask for a second. If a lot of you saw the flag at half-mast, a city employee passed away, how pull off? Somebody described him as a gentleman. If you looked up the word gentleman in the dictionary, you'd probably see a picture. The man came to work every day in a jacket and tie. The man was nothing, he's of class. He was just such a great person. I worked with him for 27 years and unfortunately he passed away. Just everybody, I wish you'd say a little bit of prayer for him. Thank you.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Is that good? Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Councilmember Werner.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comment from that speaker.
Thank you, Robert Weiner, 601 Madison Avenue. First, I want to thank Councilmember Clayton for her kind words on Monday about Asbury Park's junior entrepreneurial training known as the Jet Program and Tom Gilmore for getting all of that information up on the website. I'd just like to give, a few of us around the line here, just give you a little background about the program. This program was modeled after a successful program for 17 years in Trenton by a group called Minding Our Business. Frank and Trudy Syfax were aware of the program and they said, "Why can't we do this in Asbury Park?" They approached Paul McKeeverly of Interfaith Neighbors and Paul said, "Sure, we can do it." And Roger Boyce behind me is going to tell you how he did it. And by the way, Councilperson Clayton was voted best judge, I'm sorry, Paul, on Monday. And my students wanted to remind you that despite what you told them, they're going to sell chocolate-covered gummy bears on Saturday made in Monmouth Fair. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody says a clock. Good evening, I'm Roger Boyce. I'm here representing Interfaith Neighbors, actually run the Business Development Center, which is located on Springwood Avenue. Other people are going to talk about the Jet Program details and how it was created and all the beautiful children and bright children we have in Asbury Park involved in the program. But I think what should really lift your hearts is the way this thing actually got started. Every great program needs a visionary and that was Frank Syfax. Matter of fact, he came to my office about over a year ago wanting to get this started and he came to my office actually every day wanting to get this started. And eventually I capitulated and said, "All right, I'll help you do this." So what happened is, Interfaith Neighbors, we put together a pretty detailed plan of how we would do entrepreneurial training for youth in Asbury. And what we did is we went out and we raised some funds. And we were able to get funds from PNC Bank and the state of New Jersey, they were very, very generous. So this program comes to the children of Asbury, no cost to the parents, the children, taxpayers, the city, the schools, totally free. We've had some tremendous, tremendous support from volunteers, I call them the Dream Team, just to mention their names and probably someone will get up here and speak. We have Frank and Trudy Syfax who help get the kids to the training, take care of anything that needs to be done. We have four great mentors, Robert Weiner, Michael Mills, Charles Hawk in a second, and Doug Gilson, the Boys and Girls Club. There's been two other organizations that have helped us do this. Robert already mentioned it, MLB of Trenton, also Rider College, they all trained us. Went to a weekend-long training to learn how to mentor the students in this process. And I think the last thing I want to say is Charles Simmons, who's really been the director of the program, 100% volunteered his time, has really made it happen and spends just tremendous amount of time working with the kids, organizing the sessions. And he'll give you some of the details of the program, but countless hours have been spent by Charles and I'd like to probably just thank him for doing that. Thank you.
So, good evening, I'm Charles Simmons from Freehold, New Jersey. So the one thing that Roger doesn't like to tell when he tells how I got involved with the program is we've met a couple times and I said, "Boy, this sounds like a great program." So I'm a semi-retired former entrepreneur, so I said, "Sounds like a good way to spend, you know, five to 10 hours a week." So we get to the first meeting and he introduces me as, "Here's Charles Simmons, he's the director of our program." But it's been a great experience. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the program. So it's a 15-week program, 15 sessions where we meet with the kids, we teach them about starting their own business, we help them develop ideas for their own business that they start for a one-day event. And our one-day event is coming up this Saturday. You'll hear me mention that again, but at the Made in Monmouth Expo, they'll be selling their products. So the teams go through a couple of weeks of team building, they go through and learn about, you know, how to come up with a name for a business, what the business is going to do, come up with a slogan, learn about advertising, they actually do a business plan. And our business plan presentations were last week. Each team got a loan, one team got a loan for $150, the other team got a loan for $200. And they're off this week, one team is making custom T-shirts with iron on, so we're ironing away this week making shirts. The other team is making chocolate-dipped treats, gummy bears along with strawberries and churros. And we'd be selling those again this Saturday at the Made in Monmouth Expo from 10 to 4 at Monmouth University. So I also want to thank several people who were instrumental in making the program as successful as it is. First of all, the parents, the parents of these kids, we have 17 students and the parents have been absolutely tremendous. They've had the kids there on time, they come pick them up, any support that we've needed, they've been very, very good at supporting the mentors as we run the program. Boys and Girls Club, as I think Roger mentioned, Big Brothers, Big Sisters helped us source a couple of students. Asbury Park Middle School, we were supported by the principal there, Principal Lewis, and especially by Joel Fergus, who's worked with me a lot to make sure that we get information to the kids in a timely matter. Sisters Academy, Sister Mary Louise Miller and her assistant Sandy have been instrumental in helping us. Our Lady of Mount Caramo, Sister Jude, along with Connie Isabel and Justin Ardenet have been helpful. Hope Academy, while Hope is not an official member this year, we've had a lot of support from Denise Rodriguez in terms of translating our documents from English to Spanish. The biggest thanks of all goes to the students. We have 17 wonderful students from Asbury Park that have been absolutely great. So again, Saturday, 10 to 4, Made in Monmouth Expo at Monmouth University. Please show up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm so happy, first, just to say how a vision comes together for over two and a half, almost three years, my wife and I have been to Trenton, seen kids doing this entrepreneurial training, business plan and all that. And when I brought it back to Asbury, it just wouldn't work. So I just prayed. I said, "I know that our kids can do a whole lot," besides every time you look around, it's test, test, test. So now they got something. But I just want to let you know one thing, that entrepreneurship training is not just someone that's taking care of a business, it's encouraging creative thinking, promoting a strong sense of self with accountability, and it's the ability to recognize opportunities in one's life, pursuing such opportunities by generating new ideas, create an update on a new venture, and think in a creative and critical manner. And our kids here in the Asbury Park community think on their own, with all this help we have with our mentors, they have did a fantastic job. And I just want to be able to say to everybody here that from the local business community, we need sponsors, we need people to volunteer as mentors, and believe me, they will get the best training. I wish some of our teachers could do the same thing because the kids enjoy, they be engaged, they know what's going on, and when you have somebody there that's really helping along, they can do so much. I just want to personally thank Interfaith Neighbors, Roger, Paul. When I first came to them, he didn't even hesitate, he just said, "We do it." And then when I brought it to, when I met Roger, Roger just went off and built the Dream Team. But first I just want to say thank you to Interfaith, thank you to the Boys and Girls Club of using their van for transportation till some of the students had to be picked up and also dropped home at night. But my wife, thank God for her because she's always supported me in everything, she was riding along with me to make sure that we always had two adults in the van at all times. And also thank you to Charles. Oh man, they just do what they gotta do. But also thank you to you, Councilwoman Clayton, you and your judges, and I'd like tonight to have that $190,000 that you was going to give to students. That would be a good thing to do. But anyway, I just want to thank you, everybody, for doing what they did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mrs. LaShawn Anderson-Bray. I'm here tonight because in the Asbury Park Press, I see how they highly speak about the Long Branch team and how they've come over and they helped the Asbury Park housing. I don't see that. What I do see is in 2009 of May, I was charged more than 30% for my rent. They said that when Mr. Holmes was in office, a lot of money was missing or whatever. I don't know the details of what happened with Mr. Holmes, but as of Long Branch taking over, there has been a lot of misappropriation of funds. The safety of the environment in which we live in is badly conditioned. I feel as though when you're housing multi-families, you should be serving some type of justice to them. The Asbury Housing Authority has numerous of properties as well as a lot of children. There's no playground where I live in a Lincoln Village, there's nothing for my five-year-old child. The safety, I'm afraid to be there with my five-year-old. They have a steel door with no intercom. The gang members come in, they tag up the buildings. Inside, they also smear human feces. My manager I could never get in touch with. As I said, a misappropriation of the monies, yes, I don't understand how a lot of money is missing when you personally walk your money down to the rent mailbox. I feel like you have numerous meetings with these people about your rent money and they still decide to take you to court, which incur $60 for them just to take you to court for court costs. A lot of the Housing Authority notices as well as the leases contradict themselves a lot. One minute they have that you have to pay for this, the next minute you don't. My manager is very hard to get in touch with. I'm not able to talk to Mr. Tyrone Garrett. I don't have luck talking to Mr. Randy Phillips. And I just feel with all the money that they're getting from state funding or government or whoever they're getting, they should do better for the community as well as the tenants that are living there. I mean, we are giving them money, it's not like we're just living there for free. When are they going to do something about all these properties for a better living for the people in this community that matter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Jones, former business owner here. I'm going to piggyback on, I didn't know she was going to speak on that. Quality of life. I would like an update, what's going on with the Springwood Avenue playground, which has taken like ridiculously long to do a stupid little playground, and an update with the DeWitt Avenue tree issue because the season is upon us, we need to improve some quality here. Any updates?
When you're done, because once you stop, once you say you're done, your three minutes is up.
No, it's two minutes, that was it, my two questions.
And then you're done?
That's it.
Okay. Do you want to answer the, I have no idea about the trees. But I can tell you, Monday night, we had the engineer the city hired in June of '14, Suburban Consultant here, to explain to us why all the holdups and ballops with Springwood Avenue Park. None of us were happy, nobody in the audience was happy, no council person was happy. We have a meeting next week with Suburban to follow up on that. They changed, Jesse referred to the bathroom issues, a lot of changes were made without Mayor and Council, the policymakers knowing about it. So we're trying to figure out where we are, we're trying to figure out where the funding is, we're trying to fast-track and get it back on the fast-track because it fell off the tracks altogether. So we are on top of that. Soon as we found out, we had a meeting February 11th and we told tomorrow, it's going out for bid, February 12th. We found out March 30th, it never went out to bid. So the first meeting in April, we have them here to explain what happened. So we're on top of it and looking into that. Hopefully, you know, next meeting we'll have more information and you can watch PTV and hear the conversation with Suburban. The trees, I don't know.
I got your email last week. I had a conversation with Robert Banchini about it, and Robert and I were scheduled to go out there to look at them again, to see which ones could be removed. There was a question about whether the West Side, excuse me, West Side Community Center wanted theirs removed or not. So that's something we just, you know, need some clarification on. But we didn't forget about it, Robert and I did have this conversation.
Right, because the sooner you get it, the quicker you can alleviate the long-term problems that will incur for the city, public works will be overloaded as well as the residents.
Teresa, you told me you were done.
I got 27, 26 seconds. You can go to Neptune and we can get the consultant that did the Springwood Avenue Park over there because this is crazy.
From now on, when somebody says you're done, reset the clock, please.
The clock is still running.
I know, Teresa, no problem. Thank you.
Tony, do you have anything to say to the young lady that spoke earlier about predictions? Oh, we got to talk about that next week.
I'm going to see me after the meeting.
We don't run the housing. But we can follow up with the housing authorities, hopefully.
I'll talk to her after the meeting.
Hi, my name's Jeff Porter, I'm an Asbury resident and I'd just like to voice my opinion against the Madison Marquee food trucks. Again, the new location, it's still pretty much the same location, just moved north. It's still on a sand dune and these dunes have, they already have protective grasses and fences around them for a reason because we need them to help us fight off storms. It just doesn't make very much sense to me. Also, it seems like they're kind of rushing the matter. There's a building that everybody sees, it's empty and full of cats. I think if they really had vested interests, they would take that building, make something of it instead of rushing the issue and trying temporary solution just to make some money. It seems like they haven't even thought it out because the new area is in front of a sewage treatment plant, which who wants to eat food there? And it's in front of the dog beach where tons of people from all over the area come with dogs. And if you have a dog with no leash on the beach running, where do you think they're going to go? There's five food trucks there, I mean, it just doesn't make much sense. Plus it's on a sand dune and it's just not eco-friendly, doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Read them around 08th Avenue. As of Monday night, I was thinking about the parking lots. Are we going to get any revenue from those parking lots like we do for the other three that are down there? And that's one question. The other one is, are we going to get anything if there's the food trucks? Are we going to get any revenue from? Many people unless there's an event going on. So could you explain that?
Are you done, Rita?
Yep.
Okay, Tony?
All right, the third position is a program development aide. It's a third program development aide, they're all part-time. Rather than going with the full-time staff that we used to have, because of the Affordable Care Act, we've been forced to go to part-time employees. So that third person is another part-time person. Those three workers that are up there are all part-time.
All part-time, so why do you need three?
In order for us to do the programming that's done up there, we need to make sure that we have those individuals who are working, who are actually there to provide the services, to provide the programs.
Are we getting revenue from the parking?
Eventually.
What's eventually? I hope you're going to put a timetable too on that temporary condition. You have to have a timetable, you can't just say temporary.
There is.
There is?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a timetable and a revenue at the end.
The other thing, I forgot one thing, comp time, have you been working on that?
You told me you were done, Rita.
I thought I was done, I forgot.
The clock says you're done.
I'm getting old.
Well, then you got to volunteer at the senior center.
So have you been considering comp time? I mean, talking about it or doing something about it?
Yes, we met with the Labor Attorney and closed exec and we're addressing the issue. So we're not going to negotiate publicly.
Okay.
Arman Khaimakchen, 317 Sixth Avenue. I would thank you, your governors, all these honest people we selected. My dumpster left me. You won't know how happy I am. Last night I come home, Eleanor called me, says, "Your shoes on?" I says, "One is on, one is off." Come, come. We went to balcony, I see nice and clean, you can breathe. I thank you, Mr. Moore, Emmy Quinn, I know you're oldest because the new ones, they didn't know anything about, I appreciate what you've done. Thanks a lot. Now we have an honest government, we will go forward. Thank you.
Now, as much as I said before, if you looked up the word gentleman would be how, if you looked up the word perseverance would be him. It took 12 years to set this up.
Oh, 12, I said six.
It's maybe more than 12.
We're almost going to break that record with the landscaping, right? Ellen Muller, 1501 Ocean Avenue, North Beach. I first of all would like to thank the members of the council, I-Star and Madison Marquette for hearing our concerns about the food truck park and trying to address them. But there's one thing I do want to make clear, we have been much aligned, maligned by some members of the press and in Nextdoor that we don't want any development at North Beach. And that is not true, we do. But we'd like to see that development be consistent in both style and character for what has been done already in Asbury Park. And that was our only battle. So I'm going to move on to that. And the next question I have is, we have heard from so many people, back in 2012 at Bamboozle, they tore out all the landscaping on our islands on Sixth and Seventh Avenue. We hear the city did it, we hear Madison Marquette did it, the only one that hasn't gotten, you know, hit with this knife has been Brian and I-Star. And now Madison Marquette says, "No, we didn't take it out." The city says, "No, we didn't take it out." I don't know who took it out, but we would like it back. And we have been asking this question for three years. It was destroyed, taken out, and now we have nothing and we had landscaping before. I don't know who else to go to. I hear Sixth Avenue island belongs to the Berkeley. I go to the tax assessor's office today, there's no lot or block number assigned to that island so they can't tell me it belongs to the Berkeley. Now, I'm not sure that story is just a story that if you tell it enough, it just simply becomes true. So I don't know who owns it, I don't know who's responsible. All I know is we would like to see that landscaping returned. And since we are now looking to endeavor upon this fabulous park that we're going to be putting there and landscaping and the parking lots and everything, can we not get this addressed as well? We have been waiting for three years. I'd like to not wait 12. If I could not, thank you.
It's the Sixth Ave medium, just so I know. Just so I know.
Sixth Ave.
Yeah, it's not really assigned to anyone now. There's not even the city blocking it.
Well, it's I-Star, right? Are you a volunteer?
No, I-Star.
Okay, okay. We'll look into it.
Good question.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Jerry Scrannell, Long Branch. Today I was on Grand Avenue and I saw the new light that they put up for the new condos that are going up, the townhouses, they look really nice along Cookman and Grand and I think it's Madison Street. I just want to say whoever picked them out, they're really nice. Now, the other thing is, I brought up Monday was, does anybody find out about Steiner Avenue by the North Train Station, why it's been blocked off? Because it was open when I first came to town and it was open for a few years and then all of a sudden when the visiting nurse took over the property soon after, it got sealed off and I think it should be reopened, I think at the public tower fair. The other thing is, if we're going to have the food trucks, maybe they could have a movie night with the wall of the sewer plant, they could have movies down at that end of the town. They used to have them up by Cookman Avenue before the Griffin was built, that would be a good return. I think they should install a new fire hydrant over there in case they really need one for an emergency up there, that should be part of the requirement. Are they going to have real bathroom facilities there? Are they going to have a trailer up there for the people? I would just, I didn't see that in the drawing and I really am serious, the drawing that they presented, you could get 12th graders to do them, you know, at one of the high schools. They really need better drawings and there's no reason with today's animation, you can't have 3D drawings or a little video to show people like on YouTube so we could see it here what it's going to look like from different angles, from the ocean, from the sewer plant, from the apartment. And I didn't understand much about the fence, about how that's going to be a good idea or a bad idea, that it's going to be well-lit. There are a lot of things that were left open that need to be tweaked and I think you should have a three months or a month period where you can review some of the problems and get them corrected right away before the season's over because it's not fair to make people wait another year to get the problem corrected because we see what happened with the panels, the copper panels on Convention Hall, we see what happened with the casino building, got leveled, never came back. I don't want to say they can't be trusted, but they need a timetable that they have to agree to. And then the last thing is, Tony, I keep asking you about the comp time and the time clock and I feel bad because you're the temporary guy, but the thing is, the reason I brought up about the time clock wasn't so much to monitor the day workers or the people that get paid by the hour, it was I was really worried about the comp time with people leaving with boat tracks and no one watching who's signing off on who's getting the comp time because in the real world, I believe other towns, if they get comp time, you have to get pre-approval before you take the comp time. You just don't get a bunch of...
Tony, do you want to answer?
Comp time here is the same, you have to have pre-approval for it. Except if we have an emergency, the department heads are going to check on it, the department heads are going to know that their people are out on overtime for whatever the reason is. Our comp time is pre-approved. If we have department heads who are going to evening meetings or if we have staff that are going to evening meetings, the department head knows that they're going to be at those meetings. They know prior that they're going to be there. They might not know how many hours at the end because we don't know how long those meetings are going to last or how long the activity is going to be. But people do know.
All he's going to do is answer now, no more questions.
Okay.
Okay.
No, he may have more answers.
Well, the only thing, I'm gonna spend two seconds since two people brought up the food trucks. So, the food trucks were meetings between I-STAR, Madison Marquette, and members of the city over the last six weeks, and not hour meetings, three or four-hour meetings, to bet this. So, it was well thought out. It isn't at the Dog Beach. It's, we took North Beach's concerns, we took Asbury Towers' concerns, or we took North Beach's concerns and we took Asbury Towers' delight at the idea of food trucks, and tried to come up with a reasonable compromise that would provide some food on the north end. And that reasonable compromise was move it a little away from North Beach and move it a little closer to Asbury Towers. But it's not on a dune, and it's not in front of the North Beach. It is next to the sewer plant. You are correct on that part of it. Or the sewer treatment facility.
So is the board office, and so is the beach, and thousands of people go to the beach every day.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure if that helps a little bit of clarifying, but this was the reasonable compromise that we listened to from the North Beach residents and that we listened to from the Towers and from other residents in the city that were either against it or for it. This is what we came up with. And the main issues with the food trucks, as I know them to be, or what people emailed me about, were generators, which are absolutely not happening, there is no generators, was waste, which Madison Marquette is putting a staff person bussing the tables and dealing with waste the entire time. Hours, which we've cut their hours from 11 to 9. We've rejected their proposal for longer hours. And the only thing that this council is doing is saying, "You can move this to planning, and here's the recommendations that we think that you should strongly consider if you're gonna approve it." That's what this council's doing. They're saying, "Yes, you can go onto the planning board and you can pitch to them the food trucks with these restrictions, and the planning board will vote however the planning board votes." I have no idea how the planning board's gonna vote. But that's what we did for the food trucks, just so, just so we're kind of clarifying some of the points, because it was, I'm not sure if all of the information on them was factual. And I will ask Madison Marquette and I-STAR for 3D YouTube videos of all of their next projects. Because I think that's what that means.
Jerry, a lot of your questions will be asked at the planning board, and that is an open meeting to the public, where the public can come and raise questions and concerns also. And hopefully, anybody with concern goes to the planning board. As far as Steiner Avenue, I agree with it. And Tony, that's gonna take a while, that's another transportation center where I say they say. That goes back to when Bruce Stiles owned the building, goes back to when Butchy Saunders was mayor, goes back like many moons. So, we'll try to get on that, but it's a good question, but we're not gonna give you an answer overnight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Warner?
All right, thank you. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Hearing that comment about Sixth Avenue and the island triggered some distant memories in my head here.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, scary, isn't it? The original redevelopment plan, as I recall, called for Sixth Avenue to be reopened. That half, the southern part of Sixth Avenue, which the Berkeley uses as a parking lot, was supposed to have been purchased and conveyed to the city as a public street again by the master developer. And the clause in the agreement was that if they could not come to terms with the Berkeley Carteret as to a sale price, that they had the right to condemn by eminent domain and take the entire Berkeley Carteret property, including the hotel. Now, this opens up an interesting window of opportunity. The Berkeley Carteret gets horrible reviews consistently on TripAdvisor and probably on some of the other review sites. And one of the critical things that people mention all the time is the horrendous parking situation. That lot is horrible, and people review it appropriately. So, I'm gonna suggest maybe you get your legal eagles, Development Council, to review the original contract and establish whether or not that is in fact still in force, that that property, that's the parking lot, is supposed to be turned over back to the city as a public right-of-way, which would create more paid parking, by the way. And in lieu of that, that maybe the master developer could take the entire Berkeley and maybe partner with Madison Marquette with the pavilion across the street and maybe rebuild that whole complex the way it's supposed to be. Everyone's talking about the pavilion being vacant. Here's a window of opportunity for a good partnership. So, anyway, that's my memory from way, way back.
In the master plan, Warner? That's where you...
No, it's in the redeveloper agreement. It's in the redeveloper contract.
Jeez. Okay, thanks.
All right. And it's in the plan. The plan designates that street to be reopened, and to implement that, some clauses were put in the contract between the city and the master developer to effectuate that.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you for your brain trigger tonight.
Unless somebody took that out over the years and threw it to the wind, but let's find out.
We're gonna investigate it. And motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Tony, you will look into it? Thank you.
Okay, we are on to item F, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items on the consent agenda are 2015-143, approving special events, wedding applications as presented on April 6, 2015; 2015-144, approving a catering permit for a Loragon restaurant, doing business as the windmill for an event on May 16 and 17; 2015-145, authorizing the execution of an agreement with CGI Communications, Inc. for a community showcase video program. Councilmember Clayton?
Need a motion?
Yes.
Move it.
Second. Just at the end, 2015-146 is gonna be separated and voted on individual.
Yes, that's been voted on. Move down to individual.
Okay, cool, cool. Thank you. Go ahead.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Absent.
Step down.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Individual Resolutions, 2015-133, authorizing appointments to various boards, commissions, and/or committees if necessary.
Move it.
Second.
We have it.
Okay.
Okay, we are on to 2015-146, a resolution authorizing the County of Monmouth Mosquito Control Commission Division to conduct aerial mosquito control operations within the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are they going to do this?
With what?
With airplanes and spray?
The answer is, nobody knows. It's a thing that they adopt every year in case they have to do it, so...
But, well, what happens if they decide they need to? Do they come back to us and advise us that they're gonna spray pesticides?
Yes. They would tell us that, and they would tell us when, and give us a schedule and everything. This just gives them the permission to do it in case there is a reason to do it.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution fixed. On to 2015-147, a resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $1,328,313.20.
Move it. Second. Question. I'm gonna vote all on, I'm gonna ask you how I should do this. I'm gonna vote all except one, so should I separate that, or should I just say yes on all except number blah, blah, blah?
That would be fine.
Okay.
With respect to that one item, will you be abstaining?
I'll be voting no.
You'll be voting no?
Yes.
So then why don't we separate that one out and take a separate vote on that one?
I got five.
So, why don't we take a motion in a second on the bill list, with the exception of that one item, can you just identify for the record which item you're referring to?
5-01-26-290-000-205, Streets and Roads, Snowstorm Expenses, Per Construction.
Okay. So, you'd be voting on all expenses listed in the bills list other than that one item at this time?
Okay.
And I have a question. Item T-20-56-850-909-801, reserved for tax sale premiums?
Do you want me to tell you?
I wanna know what it is.
These are people that bought liens at the accelerated tax sale, and they've been paid off by the owners, and the city's holding their money in escrow, so they have to refund it.
Okay.
No problem.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes, on everything I'm abstaining from, people associated who may.
Okay. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Except for...
Now, we're gonna take a separate vote on that one.
Okay. I need a motion in a second.
Yes. Move it.
Second.
And this is on the one item that Mayor Moore indicated he's gonna be voting no on.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
2015-148, a resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount of $826,721.71.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And to Resolution 2015-149, a resolution authorizing compensation payment to Donald Sammet upon his separation of employment.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2015-150, a resolution requesting dedication by Ryder for a dedicated trust for Uniform Fire Safety Act penalty monies, NJAC 5:70-2.12A-B.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
I'm not sure about this. I abstain from...
Okay. Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2015-151, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, acting as a waterfront redevelopment entity, granting conceptual approval to Madison Asbury Retail LLC for the proposed food truck court in the Green Acres parcel in Block 4502, Lot 1.25, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it. Second.
Question. So, I was just in the workshop session, and Fred, I know you weren't here, but I had requested that some of the 6, 7, and 8, the language just be changed, because it starts there in the beginning with, you know, hours of operation will be this, generator should not be permitted, and it goes through specifics. And then where it gets to 6, it says the developer should provide a plan, the plan were with a garbage plan, and we wanted to, they've already agreed to put a person there and have garbage pickups twice a day. So, we wanted to say that they will do that, and that will be included in their plan. And then for 7, they will just provide water. They won't provide a plan for providing water, they will provide water. And number 8 is, they will not allow, we don't need a plan for wastewater, because there's not gonna be any wastewater disposal on the site. And I didn't know, we got those changes from Wednesday. Were you in agreement to tighten that up?
Correct.
And I don't know if, I didn't see a resolution with an update.
I know that Carl Kemm from McManam &amp; Scotland, who was here on Monday, did revise this in order to work in some concerns that were raised at the work session on Monday where I was absent. So, he has provided a revised version for you for this evening. So, you're acting, you're acting on a different version of the resolution than the original version that was in the packets that went out on Friday.
Yeah. I gave you all up for the versions.
Okay, got it.
I glanced at it, Joe, because we got it late. And I thought, from my recollection, again, this is simply my recollection, you also wanted the, you wanted the hours or the two years in there? And we made sure that was in there, but I don't know if I checked.
Two years was in there to start, and the hours was in there to start. And it was clear. So, let me just, just wait, bear with me for one second. I didn't see it. So, 6, right, right, developer, it's water of the property, developer knew wastewater on the site. Okay, question answered. And then the signage question was clarified, revised, and recommended by the tier. Okay, cool. Sorry, I just didn't see it. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2015-152, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, approving an application for a five-year abatement filed by Asbury Music Center LLC and directing the city's special tax council to prepare a financial agreement for further consideration.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2015-153, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, acting as the redevelopment entity, granting conceptual approval to Asbury Partners LLC regarding the installation of an interim surface parking lot on Block 3103, Lot 1, within the waterfront redevelopment area, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approval.
Comment. So, just...
Question, second.
Sorry.
Move it.
Second.
Okay. So, just so the public knows, this was a really lengthy discussion on Monday night. So, if you weren't here Monday night, you can obviously catch it on AP-TV of what's happening with the parking lots, and that we are doing some, they're gonna be a little different than the other parking lots, in that they're going to be addressing some stormwater management issues. There's gonna be some swells to stop some of the overflow that is going on. So, I could, we can talk, all I'm saying is, if you have questions about the parking lots, just watch Monday night's meeting. It was a relatively lengthy discussion and presentation on exactly what you're getting with those three lots. But stormwater management is one of the things, or stormwater runoff is one of the things that we are addressing in those three lots.
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2015-154, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park, acting as the redevelopment entity, granting conceptual approval to Asbury Partners LLC regarding the installation of interim surface parking lots on Block 3904, Lot 1, within the waterfront redevelopment area, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2015-155, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park, acting as the redevelopment entity, granting conceptual approval to Asbury Partners LLC regarding the installation of interim surface parking lots on Block 4307, Lots 1 through 3, within the waterfront redevelopment area, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to Resolution 2015-156, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 2255.
Move it.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2015-157, a res...
We're going to table that.
Based on the discussion during the work session this evening, it's my understanding that you're going to be tabling this to the next meeting, so we just need a motion and a second to table it.
Move it.
Second.
Which one is that?
This deals with the parking permits for further consideration.
Okay, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Right, so the matter's now tabled, you can have further consideration of this at the next council meeting.
Okay, we are on to item H, ordinances, this is an ordinance for introduction, 2015-11, an ordinance establishing salaries of certain employees within the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And the public hearing on this ordinance would be May 13th. On to ordinance 2015-12, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC, and granting a tax exemption.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And the public hearing on this ordinance is set for April 22nd. On to ordinance 2015-13, this ordinance, and, I'm sorry, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on Block 4104, Lots 3 through 7, 10 and 11, within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area, and establishing a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof.
Just for the benefit of the public, both this ordinance and the last ordinance both relate to the proposed boutique hotel to be constructed at the former Salvation Army property.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And the public hearing on this will be April 22nd. On to ordinance 2015-14, an ordinance authorizing the City of Asbury Park to grant a five-year abatement for property designated as Block 2404, Lot 4.02, to be subdivided from Block 2, to be subdivided from Block 2404, Lot 4, and authorizing the mayor to execute the attached agreement.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing date of May 13th. We're on to ordinance 2015-15, an ordinance establishing a 30-minute time limit for three parking spaces along Prospect Avenue, Bangs, and End Bangs Avenue in the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, and amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park according to the... Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy, Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to ordinance 2015...
Motion to enter into a public... No, no. I'm just asking when the public hearing...
Oh, I'm sorry.
When's May 13?
May 13. We are on to ordinance 2015-16, an ordinance amending and supplementing Sections 4-9 entitled "Display of Merchandise in Public Areas: Outdoor Side-Walk Cafes" of Chapter 4, entitled "General Licensing of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park."
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A public hearing date of May 13th. Ordinance 2015-17, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 4-15 entitled "Street Performers" of Chapter 4, entitled "General Licensing of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park."
Move it. Last year.
Second.
Question, I guess, I just wondered, is there any downside to, I would just wonder if there's a downside to having more time to think about it and review it, because we didn't see it.
It's just the first reading.
First reading.
Right.
I saw it, I saw the ordinance.
Right, I just have, I just want more time to think about it.
Well, here's the three changes, the hours, the fee, and moving.
Right.
Those are the, those are the only three changes to the existing ordinance.
Okay, so, there's not enough time to have more time, so I guess I understand the changes?
It's just the introduction, it's just the introduction.
Also, if any council member would like to move to table measure, you always have that opportunity.
Right, my question was just, so, okay, just introduction, if there was a move to table, would there be a delay down, how long is it, because we need the reading, it would push it past Memorial Day?
Not necessarily, if you tabled it tonight, you could introduce it on April 22nd, and then we could advertise in the Asbury Park Press, and it could be adopted on May 13th, which brings you in prior to Memorial Day. It's up to council.
I still have questions also, I know that we're thinking primarily of the waterfront, but what happens off the waterfront?
Eva, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry.
We don't, we don't have your phones off the waterfront at this point, I mean, listen, Ben, I don't mind, you can table it, I'm just, that's fine.
Yeah, make a motion to table and table it.
All right, I make, I move that we table it until the next meeting, and we don't do the first reading.
The only thing I would ask is that you get any concerns that you have, to me or Fred, before the next reading.
And just so everybody knows, we've told the city clerk's office not to issue any of this, to these are resolved, so that's no big deal, I mean, if it's only on the beachfront, we'll get Memorial Day, we have plenty of time, but nobody's going to come in between now and then and get one until this is resolved, okay, so.
So we have a motion and a second to table.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Kendall?
To table, right?
To table.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance tabled. On to second reading, public hearing, a motion to enter into a public hearing on ordinance number 2015-09, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit and establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A:4-45-14.
Move.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Fred, you want to give a brief explanation, and then we'll open it to the public?
And this here, all right, we have a, the local government cap, all right, that doesn't allow us, all right, to, all right, exceed our budget by a certain percentage, what this is basically going to do is going to allow us to exceed it by 3.5%.
It's something we pass every year, it's something that's never been used, it's just like, if you need it, you have it, my goodness, nobody's needed it, if you don't do this, and you need money, the state says, too late, anybody like to be heard?
Motion to adjourn, public?
Are you capping it, like, is that the percentage?
The cap is, all right, the cap is at .5, all right, we're going to exceed that cap, all right, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're actually going to spend that money, all right, it's a reserve, all right, in case we do find ourselves going over, all right, we have the ability to have that money, all right, if we don't pass the resolution, all right, and we fall short, all right, we're not going to be able to, all right, make that move later on, so it's a reserve.
I know, it's a reserve, you did this last year, too, right?
You do it every year.
Yeah, did you use the reserve last year?
No.
No, it's never been used.
Okay, that's all I remember.
Motion to adjourn, public comment?
Move, second.
Second.
Fall in favor?
All right.
Motion to adopt?
Move it, second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A motion to enter into a public hearing on ordinance 2015-10, an ordinance governing the maintenance of vacant properties in the City of Asbury Park, establishing registration requirements and levying a registration fee on owners of vacant properties, and amending and supplementing Chapter 13, entitled "Property Maintenance of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park."
Before we move on in this, we're going to make the recommendation that it be tabled, pending, all right, change in some of the language in it, and we'll bring it back.
Well, that's a new one on there, is that legal?
Yes, you can table the public hearing and your consideration of this ordinance to the next meeting while the language is reviewed, based on the comments that came forward at Monday evening's work session meeting, and then if the changes that are worked into this document are, if they substantially affect the substance of the ordinance, then you would have to start over again, basically, and introduce the ordinance in its revised format.
As much as it's certainly tabled, and I have no problem with that, I believe people were here to talk about this, because they still talk about this, or else they wouldn't have talked about it at the public session, because maybe they have some suggestions to change the lack of...
So my suggestion is, you can open the public hearing, hear from the public, and then either close the public hearing or table this, keeping the public hearing open, so that if this comes back in the same format at the next meeting, people will still have the opportunity to comment on this at the next meeting.
That works.
So you want to open the public hearing, then?
Please.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, I do have some questions and comments about this, in reading through this, the very first set of definitions that actually define a vacant property, I think you might have a logical inconsistency here that you might want to address, it talks about, hold on, let me put my other glasses on here, okay, it talks about, provided however that any habitable property where all building systems are in sound working order, where the building and grounds are maintained in good condition, and, which are being actively marketed by its owner for sale or rental, shall not be deemed a vacant property, now, that begs the question, what about a building that has everything working in good condition, is well-maintained, but it's a summer home, and nobody's marketing it for rental or sale, that would, by definition of this, be a vacant property and fall under this, and I don't think you want that to happen.
That's addressed.
It is.
That is addressed, and we are aware of...
There's an exemption.
Where's that? I'm looking at page two, under definitions of vacant property, and you say there's something here about seasonal, being exempt, I didn't see that, where is, where is that? You might have missed putting that in.
Okay, well, we're looking for it.
Okay, while we're looking for that, then I have another question about why there is such a distinction made between owners of vacant property who are just, you know, Tom, Dick, and Harry, a family, an individual, trying to renovate a house, versus an owner who is deemed to be an entity experienced in rehabilitation, redevelopment, et cetera, and the property is subject to municipal plans and ordinances, it seems to me, in reading this, that the individual property owner, who is not a developer, has a higher level of standard to perform than the developer actually does, which also seems illogical to me, a developer, by nature of their being a developer, has experience, capital, resources, and the wherewithal, hopefully, to make the project happen in a timely manner, yet a developer is given unlimited numbers of extensions, whereas the private property owner is given one extension, and that's it, tough luck, and there's no mention of economic conditions or anything like that for a private owner, whereas those kinds of conditions are specifically mentioned for a developer, it seems as though the criteria is backward, I think the criteria for a developer should be more stringent than that for a private property owner or a family, those are my, my main concerns with this.
Warner, what was, where was that second concern, what page? I have a marked-up copy, this is not my marked-up copy, so I'm...
Page two, Section 2F, I, I, and, well, it's one and two, 2F, where it talks about an owner versus the owner being an experienced individual in rehabilitation, if you look at the wording, the owner only gets a one-year extension unless there's compelling conditions, right, for the, for the one year, and then a developer, as part of a redevelopment project, gets unlimited extensions, I think you want that the other way around, right, don't you want developers to perform, that's why they're developers, that's why you have them being in an agreement with the city to perform and develop something, you don't want to give them unlimited extensions, so that's about it, and then just the last thing I noticed, on page four, it says, the responsibilities of the owner is to enclose and secure the structure, again, I think that's a little inconsistent with, say, maybe a summer rental, right, you don't want somebody boarding up their house, all of a sudden, now you've got what was once a nice house, all of a sudden, it's a boarded-up house, if you compel somebody simply because they're not living there for a season to board it up, so, these are some things you need to maybe straighten out.
Okay.
So, did you find that thing, the exemption?
Summer rentals, we know are accepted, I thought it was in here...
Oh, summer, summer rentals?
They're, summer residences are exempt from the vacant abandoned houses proposal, but we can check, I thought it was in here, that they weren't subject to this, but we'll check, and we'll talk to Rob about it.
Okay.
Right, I have the same recollection, and maybe it was another document that pushed things into this one, it didn't push those into it, but I, we'll double-check, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, should be consistent, and the thing about the developers versus private property owners, maybe take a closer look at that and what the requirements are, thank you.
Thank you.
Warner hit most of the points I was going to add, but my question is, is there a, there needs to be a statement or point in the event you find someone to the end of being fined, but there's still no remediation of the issue, there needs to be something there, you can find someone 365 days, $1,000 a day, that doesn't mean they're going to take care of the problem, I know two properties now on DeWitt Avenue, the public works has been the maintainer for that very reason, there needs to be something in there to go to that level, whether it be take the property, whatever legal recourse is on here outside of a fine.
Right.
I'm sorry, but we're going to have to go back and look at the document.
Yeah, because this...
Part of what the plan was and is, that if you do not perform, your property will be removed from your ownership.
But that needs to be in...
I agree with you.
In writing.
So there's two documents, and this is where it gets a little bit tricky.
Shouldn't be two.
We're... Well, so there's an abandoned properties, which we had already... The prior council had already adopted, and then there's the vacant properties.
No, no, no. Make it all one in the same with consistency.
Legally, you can. Legally, they're two different documents, and that's the state that makes that decision, not us. So the state has two separate documents, and there's... And I'm not going to get the nuance here, but there's a difference between an abandoned property and a vacant property.
So then what you... What this heading needs to be in is abandoned property ordinance.
Well, we've already... We've already...
But that's not what was handed out to the public.
Right, so if it's useful, we can... I think it's probably somewhere, but we have already adopted the abandoned properties ordinance. This dovetails with that.
It's too screwy, confusing. It needs to be abandoned property. This is the recourse of abandoned property. What you're talking about are still viable living circumstances that just happen to be seasonal. It's a separate issue from this.
So I agree. I don't... I don't know if legally that's how it works.
It'll work, trust me. Your code enforcement already does something similar to that.
All right, we'll look into it.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Skelton. What I wanted to add was, because you know I'm in real estate, and I used to buy investment properties, it's very hard sometimes to contact these owners because they put them in an LLC, they sell the properties to LLC, and when you go check the CFO, the LLC doesn't even exist in Brooklyn anymore, and nobody knows how to get in touch. I think you need... May need another ordinance or something where, when people get a CFO, if it's going to be an LLC, you have to have direct name and the lawyer that represents the deal involved in the CFO or the title of transfer, because some of these properties you can't touch because you can't find the owners. So you need something to do that. Then the other thing is, people do die with no relatives, no wills, and the properties go in-state, and the state takes over the property. And I'm not really sure... I'll say it off the record, sometimes these properties sit abandoned for two or three years. There has to be a better system with, I guess, county records to let you guys know that something's in-state, so it can be liquidated sooner than later. I know the court system goes slow, but when you live on a block with an abandoned house and your entrepreneurs liberate the radiators and the furnace and the copper pipes, it ruins the neighborhood. And I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know how you're going to introduce it into this, but it should be covered two ways, with the new CFO title transfer, and in this, the properties that are difficult to be... Find out the ownership. We're going to fast-track it and take it away anyway, because that's what they're hoping, that you can't get to their property before they have a chance to liquidate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We're aware of that, and that's one of the things that we're looking at, is how to keep track of the LLCs and to make them respond to us, and when they move or change, that we're updated with that information. We haven't worked it out completely, but it is something that we're working on today.
And thanks, Yvonne, but the thing is, if you get the lawyer's name who's doing the transaction, they don't disappear as fast as the LLCs come and go.
That's a good point.
No, we actually had a meeting where we addressed a specific point, and there is the idea of a registry where an actual individual that owns the property has to show up, because it's already... You're right, it's been established that that's what happens.
Because when I first came here in 2000, in 1999, they used to ask you for a photocopy of your driver's license and your social security number, and then also, I guess, by 2003, they stopped doing it, but there has to be a way that... Okay, thanks a lot, you got the message.
Okay, so what are we doing, a motion to the table?
Yes. And we'll keep the public hearing open for the next ten.
Motion?
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
I got a question, and it'll be short. Just out of curiosity, you guys decided to table for some reason. I don't care what it was. Was it any of the good reasons these people came up with tonight, or is there other reasons?
There were some problems with the language that we found, all right? There were some of the issues that were brought up tonight, at least one of them.
When we get the updated version, can you redline, obviously, everything? And it kind of scares me that this is the second reading, we found out major mistakes, where, you know, we could have just passed this tonight if people in the public didn't get up and say, "We got problems, guys. It's not the first reading, it's the second reading." Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
That's it? Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.